All right. So, there are resolutions that were adopted. Signe Grimaire, if you could read those resolutions. 5.2, that's property matter with regard to industrial street. It's in English, so that the council delegate to the director of finance and economic development. No, that's not the one, that's not the proper one. Hold on. Are we dealing then with a minor variance matter? Well, the appointment of a... Well, all right, I'll read 5.3 then. Appointment of members to the committee of adjustment, be it resolved that Monsieur Pascal Leroy's resignation be accepted, and be it therefore resolved that councillor... Well, I don't believe we're dealing with Monsieur Belleguet here. Oh, Richard Belleguet, and to appoint Monsieur Jean-Yves Lalonde and Monsieur Michel Bergeron as additional members to the committee of adjustment, and that this resolution be adopted. Let's go on to 5.5. Are we going to vote on this? Yes, seconded by councillor Lalonde. With regard to appointments, all those in favor, carried. Let's go on, councillor Grimaire. Let's go on now to the next item. Surplus? Well, one or the other, doesn't matter. Well, I'm... Let's go on to the senior management, senior systems analyst? That's for Monsieur Levaire, but I can deal with the surplus city property matter. No, that's not on tonight's agenda. You should be reading those resolutions that are printed under reports stemming from closed meeting sessions. Oh, I'm sorry, I was... All right. You're finding your way through this now. There are only two resolutions to be dealt with. We've dealt with one already. Oh! I have one dealing with Monsieur Pascal Leroy. And the second resolution is before you. Monsieur Levaire will be resolved, the town council, hire Carl Zia as senior analyst for network services as of 27th October 2017, and that her salary be pegged at level five, class three of the salary grid of non-unionized employees, as recommended, seconded by councillor Sima. All those in favor, carried then, thank you. Next item on the... None? The United Counties Prescott Russell negotiations or ambulance matters? No, we don't touch those. Those are directives, fine. So, we're done with closed meeting report announcements. Yes, I'd like to announce the second... Well, on Saturday, October the 2nd, the second edition of the book fair. You can still register at www.eppelmoi.ca as well. I might say that the book fair will occur from the 27th to 29th of October at the Lescale High School here in Rockland. Anything else? The 7th of October for the spelling bee, by the way. Oh, on the 3rd of November, Monsieur Mayor. Next. There will be the heritage... We will be conducting a heritage tour, starting off at the town hall at 10:00 a.m. And there are buses available for those who wish to tour 40 historical sites throughout Clarence and Rockland. Those who identified... We won't identify all 40 venues, but we might visit maybe seven or eight. We start off at town hall. Things will start off with an official proclamation given by the mayor. We'll go down the park, and then we'll go by Saint-Pascal, Bourget, Clarence-Hammond, and we'll be back in Rockland at around 3:30 in the afternoon. And also in English, Monsieur Mayor. The historical heritage site tour will be held on November the 3rd. And we'll start off at city hall at 10 o'clock. The city hall, the mayor will proclaim... Will officially proclaim the inauguration of the tour. We have 40 historical sites in Clarence and Rockland. We start off in Rockland at 10 o'clock in the morning. And we have buses available. People who want to get on the bus can do so, but publicity has already been issued. People have to call our planning manager to reserve a place on the bus, please. So, 10 o'clock on November the 3rd, bear this in mind. Yes, councillor Lalonde, November the 4th. Monsieur Mayor, the annual wine and cheese sponsored by the UAPCC, second floor of the community center here at the arena. This particular weekend, there's a presentation of Prescott Russell artists. This presentation or this exhibit will be held at the River Rock Inn. Those who wish, there will be a presentation of paintings by artists from the River Rock Inn. Yeah. That's to commemorate the 150th anniversary of Canada. Any other announcements? Well, question period now, if you have any questions. Now's the time to step up to the mic, you have three minutes. You're awarded three minutes. You're requested to give your name, your address before making any comments or questions. Three minutes for question period. We ask you to give your name and address before you start. You're welcome to step up to the mic if you wish. Good evening. Carol Burnt, 1212 Campo Crescent in Rockland. I'm just looking to find out if there's any updates regarding Campo Crescent and Saint-Jacques Street. I was here at your last meeting. We had presented a petition on September the 6th, and we're still awaiting some results as to what the outcome will be in terms of road surfacing. That's... We'll be discussing this at 11.2, that's on the agenda tonight. 11.2 Campo Street, Saint-Jacques Petition. And Saint-Jacques Petition, well, thanks, perfect. And I see that by law, 12.2 states that you're authorizing the utilization of the roads reserved fund for Campo Crescent, so do I have to wait until that comes up on the agenda? Well, if you want to know the results, well, I would do. It shouldn't be too long, man. Well, thank you very much then, thank you. Anyone else? That's it then? Well, fine, thank you very much then. Councilmember's items, resolution presented by councillor Mario Zant and seconded by councillor Carl Grimaire in regards to the temporary structure bylaw. Whereas, a resident contacted with his ward representative to ask for an exemption to regulation 2009-158 to erect a temporary structure housing two vehicles. Be it then resolved that council mandate staff to prepare a bylaw to amend, bylaw 2009-138, to amend the temporary structure provisions to accommodate two vehicles. I would like Monsieur Mayor to start off by asking a question. Now, Mrs. Wellelet, if someone else has also added on to this particular motion, can I bring that forward or bring it to your attention? Well, the reason why I received another call, I think we'll go through a lot of things with the tempo vehicle shelters, by the way. It's something that's quite... These are items that are quite popular. And through this resolution, I would like to ask staff members to amend, amend the existing bylaw, because I believe that tempo shelters are starting to be erected as of November with metal bars. It's not all that pleasant. Well, it states there, be it resolved to mandate staff to prepare a bylaw to amend. So, we might ask town staff to add this provision that you're alluding to on to what is already pre-existing. Yes, because the bylaw as is written... Well, I think we should look at this bylaw, because there are many things that need to be updated, many details that need to be updated here. Well, if you wish to give me a directive or issue an exact directive with regard to the changes concerning this bylaw, council is in agreement to vote in favor of this. Without a staff report, I can do so. I can just amend the bylaw and bring it back for further consideration or deliberation at the next meeting. Now, if you want to fully revise the bylaw with staff recommendation, it stands reason that it's going to take a bit more time than the November deadline you're alluding to. I have the bylaw in front of me. If you wish to change the date, you can do so tonight through the current resolution that you're proposing. Well, thank you, Mrs. Wellelet. Well, the reason I was asking this was that I received a call from another resident that has a year-long tempo. She doesn't have the right to have a garage, because the town has a right-of-way to her yard. So, that's why... And she doesn't have sufficient space to purchase a garage or to build a garage. And because she's in a dead end, she lives in a dead-end street, basically. She's asking council's permission to erect a tempo-type shelter. You know, we're facing... Of course, we come to grips with individual cases with regard to the tempo matter, the tempo shelter matter. I'm stand ready to vote on an amended bylaw tonight unless... Well, unless we might just specify the specific address for this address and call it an exception. We're talking about a lady that lives in a street that ends in a dead end, basically. Well, if it's too specific, however, we'll allow people to erect tempo shelters all year round. The only reason why I think this should be the case in this particular case, because I said no to many individuals that made the same request, you know, year-round tempo shelters. It's because she's located... Well, the town of Rockland has a right-of-way on her property, and she can't build a garage there. Does she right to put up... Does she have the right to put up a tempo-type shelter? Yes, because it's a temporary structure. Is there any... Why does the town have a right-of-way through her property? Well, I might propose something, Monsieur Mayor, to try and clear up the matter. I have no problem that people have the right to erect a temporary shelter as of the 15th of October, a tempo. Monsieur Zant brings a very, very salient point here, a very logical and good point here. I believe for this particular property, it's best to take a look as to why we have a right-of-way. We might vote an exception in this particular case. Councillor Lalonde?
Well, at present, we're talking about two areas or two venues. Those are two venues that we're aware of at present. But I'm convinced, I'm convinced that there are many, many addresses. Now, these two addresses would be legal and the others would not. We might as well take a look at the bylaw and revamp it completely, because there are some tempo shelters that are put up all year round. I agree, but I thought we might, you know... We might vote on it specifically tonight before the first snowfall.
Well, I have no problem as long as we revisit that bylaw. Yes, well, for the shelters that will accommodate two vehicles, we can, we can accept that one tonight, and we might come up with a further bylaw that modifies the bylaw at the next time around. Well, we might come up with a resolution calling for a delegation to be sent and to come to a... Well, I think we should... Hold on. Can I ask that I can share the address with you offline? Just to wait on this one property so that we can work through our actual bureaucracy? How's that? Can, can I ask that? That this be done? I mean, I think it's possible. It would probably be easier that council direct us to suspend further any other action on this bylaw until it is amended. Well, at least as of October the 15th, technically, people will have, would have the right to put up a tempo shelter. Well, fine. As long as it's not on city property. Well, thank you. And can I move with this now? Yes. Councillor Levaire?
Well, if we give permission for tempo-type shelters to be put up all year round? No, we're not yet at that point. We're asking that tempo shelters be put up to house just one vehicle. But it becomes a permanent structure at that time, does it not? Well, it's... It is not attached to the main building. It's not attached? No, a tempo shelter sits there by itself. Well, I want to determine at this particular address why we have a right-of-way. What's underneath that right-of-way? Do we have piping there going through? And we might have a letter then from the government, from the department once inspection has been performed on this property as to what's what? So, is everyone in agreement then? Well, you see, do you want to modify the date as to the 15th of October? And so, with regard to your members' resolution, I still have to modify your members' resolution, and this bylaw has to come back at next meeting to be voted on officially so that it become in effect. So, your, your resolution tonight allows to have tempo shelter, this particular tempo shelter, put up to accommodate two vehicles for that particular address because of that particular situation. Fine, fine. Moved then by councillor Zant. But we're still amending bylaw 2009-138. Yes, you're just asking that the date be changed, be modified, right? Well, tonight, what we're doing is that we're modifying the date, but we'll have a new, we have a new report forthcoming. And the double shelter will be allowed. Not tonight, it will be allowed when the bylaw will be enacted at next meeting. So, the date and... October the 15th and the double shelter bylaw will be dealt with at the next meeting. So, that's fine, unless you want to do it tonight. No, that's fine, at the next meeting. All those in favor, carried.
Resolution presented by councillor Jean-Marc Lalonde and seconded by councillor Charles Belleguet concerning the parking bylaw. Go ahead. Be it resolved that council mandate town administration to prepare a bylaw to modify the parking bylaw to allow parking on both sides of Heritage Boulevard from Sylvain and Raymond right up to Saint-Jacques Street. Seconded by councillor Belleguet, questions? Councillor Lalonde, where are we at, Julien now, with the infamous list of roads that need to be worked on? Well, I believe that we'll be forwarding a report. Do you have an idea as to the... Can you give us a timeline?
Well, as things stand right now... Did you not say January last time around? Yeah, we bantered about January as a potential date. Because for the past two years, we've been working on this priority list of streets and work that, that need work done on a priority basis. Any other comments, councillor Lalonde? I don't like us to proceed in bits and pieces like this, but... Well, that's the answer that I had last time I brought this to council's attention, but I was told that this has to be looked into from start to finish. That was two years ago. Well, if the report comes back to us and the department's recommendation, once they've weighed the impact is to remove what's before us for whatever reason, then we look a bit disorganized. Well, they need to come up with very cogent reasons, because this street was designed for four lanes. Well, I understand what you're saying, but... Yes, but you'll... It'll be enforced for about three or four months, and then it'll be removed afterwards? Well, since we don't have any comments from the department saying yes or no, it's a good thing to do or not. Who are we to decide which street is conducive for some type of work? And other streets are conducive for other works. There are no traffic specialists on here at the council table. Mrs. Collier?
Well, council was approached by Monsieur Darch and asked what items he wanted amended to the parking bylaw, and the number of responses that were received were very minimal in terms of looking at this particular bylaw. Currently, staff is extremely busy working on the budget, trying to come up with a balanced budget by November. I suggest it's going to be in January. There are quite a number of items on the go right now. And to do this properly, that could be something that Monsieur Darch cycles back and has a look at towards the end of December to have a report ready for the new year. I can't see it happening in the, happening in the next two months. January might be pushing it. And we had discussed councillor Lalonde's recommendation for heritage, for héritage, and certainly, well, despite... Well, in time to write a specific report on that one, we had looked at the risk of putting parking there, I'm sorry. And the surface is not a higher risk of putting a parking in that area. We've done similar parking in other places. I don't see why we can't do this there. You know, well, it could be temporary until we get... Yeah, but why? Yeah, if you're giving something to residents that you remove it from them later on, what's going to happen? They're going to sign a petition, they're going to compel council to bring about changes to all of this. You see, this road was built so that may continue on to Caron. Well, this request stems from the ward representative here. Well, I'm against this particular idea. I'd rather have a full picture of the situation as it stands. Look, if you'll allow me, Monsieur Mayor. We allowed 15 minutes, you know, on Edward Street, where there are four lanes of traffic there. Look, 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 I'm convinced that town administration can't come up and say there's insufficient space. Well, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All those in favor? Five in favor, thanks. Passed. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any items that you'd like to withdraw? I believe, Monsieur Mayor, that you wish to discuss dates for budget discussions? Instead of the 7th, the 8th, and the 9th, budget discussions would be held on the 15th, 16th, and 17th, the next week. That's really something like that, right? Yeah, that's right, something like that, that's right. The thing is, is that we'll get the report the week prior to the news... New slate of meetings. So, instead of tackling the budget on the 7th without having the opportunity to go look through it, and also in the meantime, there's something happened, and it might be to my advantage that we hold budget talks on the 16th. I won't be there on the 16th, by the way, Monsieur Mayor. Well, is it possible still to obtain the report? You'll have it the next week. As if, let's say, we were entering into the 6th, 7th, the 8th, 9th, or the 10th, entering into budget talks then. Well, it, it... Will the report be ready, let's say, by the 7th? The budget report? Monsieur Kio?
Yes, yes. So, maybe... Well, we'll try to get the budget books... Well, we'll try to get the report forward at that time. We were talking about the 15th, the 16th, 17th? Well, we didn't proposing, we weren't proposing temporary days right now originally. Originally, we were proposing dates, I believe it was the 6th, 7th, or the 8th of October. Do you want to decide it now or decide on the 15th or 16th? I think it would be preferable, Monsieur Mayor, to decide tonight, because we need to advertise public meeting dates concerning the budget. My suggestion is to go the 29th and the 30th. If items come up on the 14th, 15th, and the 16th, and we need to perform research on those items, it's not prudent to hold meetings the next week. That's why we have follow-up dates. So, what would be the dates? 14th, 15th, and 16th, 29th, and the 30th? 14th, 15th, and 16th, 29th, and 30th? So, I'm sorry? Well, you see, we... When would we start? Well, we would... We would have a start date at 6:00 p.m. To give people sufficient time to make their opinions known throughout that evening. All right. Ah, I'm sorry, we're looking at dates, it would be the 18th. My partner here reminded me that I won't be here on the 16th. Oh, well, it's nice to have a partner like that. Well, if it's okay? Well, we have to advertise those open meetings, but they'll be approved the next time around. Well, there are two council meetings in December, the 4th and the 18th. Last year, we approved on the 21st, so Monsieur Wilson will remember that as being his very first day. So, the 18th would be... If you think you're ready to go on the 4th... The 29th and the 30th... Well, you're not that fast, are you? Well, only if required. Well, right now, we'll advertise approval on the 4th, and let's go. So, the 29th and the 30th, okay with everybody? And if we need additional days, well... Yeah. We'll decide then if we need additional days. All right then. That's fine. So, the 14th, the 15th, and 16th? I need someone to move this resolution. Be it resolved that the meeting dates for the purpose of deliberating the proposed 2018 budget be amended to be as follows. November the 14th, 15th, and 16th, 2017, and if required, November 29th and 30th. Okay? Seconded by councillor Zant, all those in favor? And so, the council sitting dates, December 4th, well, it's a regular meeting. Well, act... These, we're dealing with the actual deliberations at that time. Just in case you're not ready, Monsieur Kio. Thanks, Monsieur Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you so much. Councillor Grimaire?
Oh, yeah, well, that's fine, fine. I'm put on notice. All right, I'll be ready on those dates. All those in favor then, carried. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any consent items you'd like to withdraw? 10.2 sub B and 10.3, Monsieur Mayor? Those are items... Councillor Levaire, could you please read the consent items?
Yes, Monsieur Mayor, thank you very much. It will be my pleasure to do so. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under the consent items title, appearing on the agenda of the 16th of October 2017 meeting, 10.1, adoption of minutes of the following meetings, regular meeting of October the 2nd, 2017. 10.2B will be removed. Yes, let's keep on going. 10.1 sub A and 10.1 sub B, committee of the whole meeting of October the 2nd, 2007. Also, 10.2, the following recommendations from the committee of the whole of October the 2nd, 2017, resolution to authorize the administration to enter it into discussions with the school administration under the CSDCEO for the purpose of potential establishment of partnership to increase the capacity of recreational facilities in the community. And 10.3, no, we're... 10.3 has been withdrawn. Go ahead now, Monsieur Levaire, with 10.2 sub B. Whereby, an amount of $5.2 million for the improvement of the sewage treatment plant has been approved. The budget for 2014, and whereas the preliminary concept plan has given rise to modifications that impacts the existing budget, be it resolved that town council approves the work to be done along with the calendar of works to be performed that will modify the budget to improve sewage treatment plant and main pumping station facilities as set out in report INF 2017-064. Seconded by councillor Lalonde, questions? Councillor Lalonde?
Monsieur Mayor, the reason that I'd asked that we discussed this beforehand, we're talking here about 151% more. We were, the initial amount was pegged at $5 million. Now, we're dealing with a $12 million expenditure. I know that we're, we're contending with an equalization payment, but we're talking about here a 250% increase, and I'm not able to vote on this. The equalization tag of 2.8... The equalization tag of 2.8. The report states that the equalization tank was considered as part of the initial project. However, in 2014, it was contemplated for implementation in 2018 and 19, and as such, funding was not identified for this work component in the approved $5 million project. Now, I'm looking at this, Mr. Mayor, and I'm wondering, is it not better to have another company that might come up with another estimate? Of course, you, this is an engineer's estimate. I understand this. But when we go to tender, they look at the tenders that we have on hand. They always take a look at those tenders and hover around that price. But when we're talking about 151% total increase, we're dealing with a long-term borrowing of $7.7 million. Mr. Mayor, question with regard to the contingency fee. When we talk about a 3% contingency, we got involved in a 3% contingency rate, basically. You know, with regard to this particular project, it's a fairly complicated one, and it's better to be in line with a contingency fee of approximately 20%, really. This contingency fee is to be in line with that type of work to be done. I believe that we enlightened committee, the council as a whole, as to the type of contingency fee that should be attached to this particular project. And 20% is feasible. Well, our engineers start from 3% to 18%. Well, initially, the 3% rate was a cost estimate prior to design work being performed. So it was a Class D estimate. We didn't have a preliminary design. The scope of the work had been established, but it had not been fine-tuned along with the designed and preliminary drafts. So we've come up now with a more precise estimate. Well, the pre-screening here, we're talking about 250% worth of increase. The estimate was $1.3 million beforehand, and now it's pegged at $4.552 million, a difference of $3,252,000 for the same thing in two or three years from now. Mr. Keo?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to talk about the contingency here. I understand the counselor is concerned as to the amount of contingency. As the director has explained, it's a very complex project. You can be insured that contingency will not be used without a report made to council. The council has full control over this contingency. I understand, but pumping station number one has not been the subject of major works. During the course of construction on station number one, there was a mistake that occurred, and that cost us quite a lot to correct. That was at station number one. Did we perform any repairs? I believe we had to perform emergency repairs on this. That was nothing permanent, however. Was it not? We weren't dealing with a major project at that time. Well, they went through the pipes for this? Well, in preparation for this work, I believe they made some changes at the time that cost about $60,000? No, no, no. They only repaired the pipe. Well, I believe that the piping was in need of repair. Well, page 34 states and the scope of work to upgrade sanitary sewer number one, to repair concrete floor slab, and installation of pre-screening installations. Well, a year ago, when they were working with a test hose, they hit the main pipe. I'm not too familiar with the technical terms. And at that time, we'd come back to council explaining, you see, because they had to do a very rapid repair to the hole in the pipe, and they had buried the pipe in cement, we'd come back to you to explain the options. We either leave it to proceed with this work and the options that were there to fix it at that time, but we did not do any repair work because the decision and the recommendation of staff at that time was to live the fix the way it was. So we fixed the hole in the pipe, but we didn't change anything. Well, it says here, the scope of the work was to upgrade the sanitary and so on and so forth. That's why it's, there was nothing done to the station itself. Councilor Grimaud?
Well, I'm a bit in agreement with what Mr. Lallon states. We're dealing with preliminary figures, and then we're dealing with considerable increases. Now, from what I can glean from the pre-screening process, that they discovered that the sanitary sewer was in very poor condition. That's, those are things we were not aware of, but Mr. Lallon brings a very good point. But if we wait even longer, the amount is going to go even higher and higher. I understand, Mr. Lallon, that when we see prices double, there were some reasons that we're not aware of with regard to the pre-screening, pre-screening treat, test that was gone through, the pre-screening work that was done. We noticed then that the soil, the surrounding soil was in very poor shape. Still, council has final say on this. Councilor Belleguet?
Well, Mr., to further what Mr. Lallon, further what Mr. Lallon states, when we're talking about a $10 million project, we might have a 2.3 contingency fee. So are we talking then, when we go to tender from this point on? Mr. Keo? When we go for call to tenders, which budget do we give? Well, it's the approved budget. It would include contingencies. I'm sorry? Well, why would we advertise it? Well, because we say that the price of the project is the budget at such and such an amount. It's public information. It's in our budget. We have no choice. We don't. Look, we don't go out on and on about the contingency. We say that the overall budget available for this project is X amount. That's all we, I see. But when you go to tender, it might invite other prices other than what has been tendered for. When Caron was built, there were some contingency fees attached to that project. Mr. Keo, I believe, was with us at that time, and they came up with $400,000 additional expenditure, saying that they, you know, encountered some difficulties that had initially been identified in the tender documents. But you see, we're dealing with, we're talking about a $10.2 million budget, and we're deciding to add $3.2 million. So we might borrow $12.5 million instead of borrowing $10 million. Well, we're not borrowing money before we need it. It's only as we need it that we borrow it. Only, Mr. Mayor, one thing that we're doing, one thing that we're doing. And Julien can speak to this as well. There are different levels of estimates that you make in engineering and construction in different stages of a project. So as you get closer to a project, you get higher level estimates. Some of our projects had old estimates in them that were never updated. Now we have a higher level estimate. The engineers are seeing some of the difficulty in making an assessment on the property because of some of the soil conditions, et cetera. They're suggesting a contingency of 20%, which is a high contingency, but they're doing it because they cannot tell at this stage enough about this project. So they up the contingency because of the risks associated. If it's a non-risk-associated project, the contingency can easily be 5%. You know, normal type. In a land purchase, you have no contingency because you have the, you have a good notion as to what the land will be worth. But in construction, there are different levels of estimates that are made, and in this case, it's a better estimate than it there was before because of the soil conditions, et cetera. The engineers were suggesting a higher contingency fee. Well, they're saying $5 million charges will stem from development charges. Well, how much money do we have left in that then? If that's the case? About $3 million? About $3 million, if I remember right? Exactly. And if we don't have the money, we'll have to borrow that. We'll borrow it. We pay it with development charges. Exactly. But we still have to borrow, but we still have to fix it. And we're not adding onto capacity, right? And if you don't fix it, you're going to pay more down the road if we maintain the status quo and we don't add any capacity to that place. In about seven or eight years, we'll have to expand this water treatment plant. Well, the reason I was bringing it to council's attention tonight, Mr. Mayor, is I was wondering if there was the possibility of calling on another firm to tender on this. Well, how much? It costs us $500,000 to commission a feasibility study on this. Do you have an extra $500,000, Mr. Lallon, to spend on an additional study? We'd spend somewhere around $490,000 to commission a feasibility study. If we have to commission another feasibility study to enter into another round of tenders, what can I tell you? Mr. Mayor, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I know, it's... Well, why don't we approve the scope of the work needed to be done tonight? And we'll, let's, we have to approve the budget because there were no designs that were... Well, the designs are part and parcel of the budget. Mrs. Collier?
This budget was originally presented to council in 2014. Now, subsequently, last year, we approved the expenditure of $0.5 million to go and assess the entire situation. Now, because this project has been ongoing since 2014, we have now reached the time where we had added the digester. That's why we brought the whole thing back as a package to you to have that discussion. Any other questions then? Is this pegged for the 2018 budget? No, it's for now. Is it part of the 2018 budget? No. In 2014, what we're bringing back to you is the updated 2014 initial project. We came back to council last year for permission to spend $0.5 million. It might have been two years ago, maybe, to spend $0.5 million. We appointed HRV Anderson Engineering to go and assess the requirements of the pumping station, of the pumping station. But the majority of expenditures will be incurred in 2018 because the design, the final design will only be issued in August 2018. Correct. That's right. Or September 2018 contracted, contract awarded, October 2018. Construction starts in December 2018. Well, that's going to be in the 2019 budget. The monies will be spent over a period of two to three years. Correct. We cannot commence work without council giving the authority for the go-ahead for the whole project. But will that not be part and, for the work in progress, part and parcel of the 2017 or 2018 budget? Well, if we're asking for it now, if it's approved now, for example, we'll increase the 2017 project. If it was 2018, we'd simply add it on to the 2018 budget. Sometimes projects are works in project, and sometimes we need new money, and we do that through the 18 budget, and we can do, or we can do that right now. If it's urgent, that council may increase a capital budget. You see, because this was a whole project, and we required a lot of work on this project, $5 million had been approved back in 2014. Now, since that time, we were able to work with the engineers to get a full picture of what is required at the pumping station, and that's what's being presented to you tonight. We got it to you ahead of the actual 2018 budget process. So you have to pun, you have time, no pun intended, to digest the project and understand what's going on. Now, what would happen if you, and I believe that's what you're trying to understand here. If you approve the full funding tonight, we would increase the funding in that 2014 project. But all the numbers would be taken care of and represented back to you during the budget process. So this won't be put on the shelf. It'll all be incorporated. You'll have the full picture at budget time. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that the contingency fee be reduced to 6% tonight. If need be, we can increase it later on tonight. No, I'm not in agreement with that. Look, if we're stuck, we're approving the fund as the work progresses. You see, the previous director had mentioned that all contingencies in any kind of project that we're involved in, well, you see, we pegged some projects at 3% and we wound up in a whole mess of trouble. I'm just suggesting we reduce the contingency fee rate by $1 million to 6%. We, at a certain point in time, I, well, I stated that we should not indicate it during the course of our budgetary talks, but not to indicate contingency rates when you go to tender. Well, you can put up the total amount of the budget, but not in the contingency fund, but it's still going to be included in the total. You can do so. That's okay. You can do so. But we're talking about a $12.5 million amount. We'll still be juggling the same figures. And companies, well, you know, the, the companies have access to information. The agendas are made public, so I'm hoping that we go to a vote. Who are, who votes in favor? In favor? Five in favor? Majority vote? Carried. Councilor Lallon, 10.3. Be resolved that salaries paid from August 27, 2017 to September 23, 2017 in the gross amount of $966,298.30 and net amount of $724,960.67 be adopted as recommended. Seconded by Councilor Simak. Questions?
I'm wondering why we have $103,445 more to pay out as opposed to the previous month salary-wise? Well, what you're seeing here are two pay periods. The volunteer firefighters are paid on a different schedule. That includes one. And regards to the net amount that represents $111,000, volunteer firefighters are paid four times a year, four times a years. They were, they're paid on the basis of the calls they need to answer. Fine. I'd like to have a breakdown of all salaries we pay to volunteer firefighters, if I may. Thank you. No other questions? All those in favor? Carried. Let's go on now. Councilor Levert? Be resolved that accounts paid for the period of the 9th of September to the 10th of October is the amount of $8,545,870.10 be adopted as recommended. Seconded, Councilor Belleguet. Questions? Councilor Grimaud? There be a way to be supplied with a more legible document? That as, I rely on what I have on my computer screen, and I have to go right to left all the time. I don't know if it's possible to adopt a landscape mode? Eight and a half by 17? It's because we had bigger, you see,
You see, we had older eyes when working with Mr. Keough, so it became bigger. But now with younger eyes looking at the computer screen, we're making the characters a bit smaller. Well, it's preferable if we had it in landscape mode and using Excel as spreadsheets would be great. The 21st line? 21st line with regard to accounts paid? 12, 21. Management Corporation of Ontario. That's a line item here. I'd like to... That's $10,000, yes. Well, that's something that had been discussed in a closed meeting. That was... That amount was paid. See, this was discussed in a closed meeting. You might consult with Mr. Denoye tomorrow. The other is line item 64. $9,300. Sewers, R.V. Anderson. That's a study that was commissioned? That's what we alluded to tonight. How about 20... An additional $22,371 figure? That's what we talked about earlier on. I want... I'm just going to go by your office and determine where we're at with this company. We're up to $144,005,100 with this company. We're up to that. All right. And the other one, line item 71. Garbage disposal Ontario. Notre Dame landfill. Yes, this budget item deals with a $9,553 contract that was awarded to commission a study that would lead to the closing of the Notre Dame landfill site. Well, if I rely on what one of the mayors that was sitting at this table said to me, he told me that there was a report that was issued by the minister and that's housed in the archives in St. Albay concerning the closing of the landfill. Well, the Ministry of the Environment folks asked us to do some things if we wished to close this landfill, so we needed to answer. That has nothing to do with the retention basin or the catch basin, right? Well, we have to meet those criteria before... Well, this catch basin possibly was to be located to the east of the pumping station. Well, Mr. Darch was looking at the least costly alternative and that study is forthcoming. All right then, I have nothing else to ask. Fine. All those in favor? No other questions? Fine then. Campo Saint-Jacques. Whereas an amount... Whereas a report was submitted to council on September 18, 2017 by the Director of Community Services recommending that the construction of an accessible... Oh God, that has no business... This term has no business being there? Well, the contract work... Okay, all right. I'm sorry. That a pathway be added to the contract... Contracted work for parking at an extra fee of $22,750 plus HSD. And whereas a petition was submitted by residents of Campo Street requesting that council implement road rehabilitation improvements at the earliest possible date and whereas council adopts Resolution 2017-217 directing staff to recommend a source of funding to complete scratch work or scratch code work on Campo Crescent. Be it resolved that council does not approve the construction of an accessible pathway at the Gelt Sommeur Park and be it resolved that council approve the cost of $50,000 to scratch code Campo Crescent. Be it further resolved that $25,000 be taken from the General Reserve and $25,000 from the general funding road reserve fund. Seconded by Councillor Simard? Any questions? Councillor Grimaire? I noted in the report that if we were to scratch code Campo Crescent, and that's really overdue, it would extend Campo Crescent its lifespan until 2026. Now, what happens if we decide to rework Saint-Jacques prior to that date? Are we going to remove everything that's been laid down and redo Campo from start to finish? Or are we going to leave Campo on scratch code, redo Saint-Jacques and go back to Campo later on? It's an administrative matter, but there's going to be a price to pay at the end of all of this. Well, Campo is forecast for work prior to 2016. Scratch code will allow us to get to 2016, 2026 should I say, but will be... But is Saint-Jacques in the same situation? What we're indicating that Saint-Jacques be considered for scratch code in 2019. Saint-Jacques has different problems as opposed to Campo Streets. They're really not interlinked. Both of those are not interlinked. So, it could be that we lay down a scratch code in 2019 on Saint-Jacques, but we're looking at redoing everything in 2026? No. 2026 would apply only to Campo. That's not the Saint-Jacques part, part that we'll be working on because there are some underground infrastructure difficulties that Campo does not have. Solutions are not... To be applied are not the same. For Campo, pulverized and paving operation would suffice. Any other questions? All those in favor? Carry. Well, there we go then. Municipal bylaws? Bylaws? Councillor Grimaire? If you could care to read those bylaws. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted? 12.1, 2017-128 to award a contract for the installation of municipal signs and 2017-130 to authorize the utilization of the roads reserve fund for Campo Crescent. Seconded by Councillor Belleguet? I'd have a comment with regard to item 12.1 concerning municipal signage. We'd... I'm sorry? We'd ask that... Yes. Yes. But we'd ask that the individual village names be put on the signs, not only that it would reflect Clarence and Rockland. Yes. I just want to make sure that individual villages' names be also included in the signage. Yes. Name of the... The name of an individual village will appear on top of the signage. Fine. I'd ask that the same thing be considered. I know... Yes, that noted. Yes, Mrs. Collier? Before finalizing the council meeting, we just wanted to clarify the tempo motion. The tempo motion. Is there actually a commentary to hold infractions as of October 15? I would say so. Well, for the next two weeks, you mean? For the next two weeks? No, it would be for all year round. Mr. Wilson? What was your interpretation of that? Well, I know that we discussed that, but it wasn't in passed in the resolution, Mr. Mayor. We have one matter that's before the courts already for someone with regards to a tempo matters. So, we're looking for directions from council. I would leave it as is until it's adopted at the next meeting. Yeah, but you can't charge one person and then exempting everybody else. You can't do that. Well, there is a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks, yes, but still, you know, we're giving a green light to somebody to put up a tempo as of October 15 and there's someone that's already appeared in court for having erected the tempo prior to that date. Doesn't make sense at this point in time. We might be facing a dilemma here. Well, we probably should not be charging anyone, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we're issuing permits for tempo, can we exempt that person who got a ticket or what? Can we do so? It's already been dealt with through the courts. It's before the court now. There's nothing we can do. At the time, the offense was committed. He was in contravention of the bylaw, so it wasn't brought up. I guess we might as well pass it as it is right now and bring it to the next council meeting for further deliberation and bring it to... And follow along with what Mr. Wilson has suggested to defer or suspend at least as of... Well, not as of tonight because we have to bring it back in two weeks from now. Why is this tempo matter so complex? So complicated? You see, we can't deal with the one that was charged. It's already over and done with. But we might give an exemption now from this point on until then. Well, it would be from the time in which we enacted formally in November. But if this tempo has been erected as of October 15... Mr. Wilson? Mr. Mayor, let me tell you, I'm not aware of any other incidents. There's one property that we're aware that was subject of this conversation, but I'm not aware of any other charges pending or anyone else that we'd be pursuing at this time. If council directs administration to suspend infractions with regard to this particular bylaw as of tonight until further discussions are had with regards to this and we can resolve it this way. Well, you haven't voted on municipal bylaws as of yet, so if someone wishes to come up with a resolution, for example, giving a directive to the bylaw enforcement department not to enforce the bylaw, they can do so. Not through a bylaw per se, but just a resolution. So, you can vote on those bylaw 2017-128 and -130. You haven't voted on those particular bylaws yet. They're still suspended. All those in favor of those bylaws? Yes, thank you. Would there be a member of council to bring up a resolution to direct bylaw enforcement not to enforce the tempo-related bylaw as of tonight or as of October 15? That what you're saying? Yes. I'd like to ask, Mr. Mayor, that we reconsider item 9.1 to reflect exactly what Mrs. Wedett has stated with regard to the modification to make to the bylaw. All right. I'm going to add the following. And further, that bylaw enforcement... That bylaw enforcement suspend... Well, of... Bylaw enforcement of bylaw 2009-138 be suspended until the... Until consideration of the bylaw amendment. Is that okay with everyone? Fine. Seconded by... Better than what I would have said. Seconded by Councillor Belleguet? All those in favor? Thank you. Confirmatory bylaw? Mr. Mayor, we still have an item pending stemming from the closed meeting. We can deal with that on November 6 then. That's fine. Be resolved then that bylaw 2017-129 being a confirmative... Confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council held on the 16th of October be adopted. Seconded by Councillor Laverre? All those in favor? All those in favor? Carry. Adjournment called at 8:29.